At this time, we'll call the October 2nd, 2017 Alexander County Board of Commissions meeting to order. I will recognize Vice Chairman Ronnie Reese for the pledge of allegiance. We will rise for that. And after the pledge of allegiance, for those that won't participate, we'll have a brief invocation. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Lord Father, we thank you for this day. Lord, there have been many, many tragic events in our country recently, and we only ask for your healing power, as only you can intervene. We ask that we bring unity to our country and we eliminate the divide. For our meeting tonight, we ask that you give us wisdom to make decisions that are the best interest of our county and our citizens. We ask that you put a hedge around those that protect us, our law enforcement, our UMS, and all the personnel of our county. Lord, do we ask that you guide us and lead us in all that we do? Amen.
Amen.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to recognize Mr. Ronnie Reese, as we have a special announcement here tonight. It's Ms. Judy Lael, if you'll come up, and we'll make a presentation.
Something to say? Really hate to see you go, but I understand your retirement's a good thing. I saw your family back there, so you'll have a good time, I'd say. And this is from a county commissioner, it's a plaque given to you. It says, "Alexander County Board of Commissioners bestows the key to the county upon GDS Lael in recognition of 10 years of dedicated service at the Alexander County Board of Elections, presented October the 2nd, 2017." And we appreciate what you've done for the county, and appreciate your job, and you enjoy retirement.
Thank you.
And we're glad to hear some words from you.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I get a picture?
Ronnie.
It's my pretty. And Judy, to the members of your family, at the end, we'd like for them to join you for a picture as well.
Okay.
Oh, okay. One more. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Mr. Chairman and Board members, thank you for your kind gesture and words. Public service is a special calling, and I feel honored to have served the voters of Alexander County for the past 10 and a half years at the Board of Elections. First is the Deputy Director, and then is the Director for the past four years. Alexander County is a beautiful place, filled with many good, kind, and caring people. Our office staff is a small but talented group who work together in a cohesive unit to conduct all the elections in the county. Patrick Wyke has been the Deputy Director for four years, and will be the new Elections Director. In fact, he was sworn in this morning. Our part-time staff has been Nancy Falk, Ruth Kalala, and Kathy Holler. This amazing group of people coordinated and worked as a team to provide seamless elections for the past four years. During that time, we opened two new satellite early voting locations. We are now one of 22 counties that has the newest certified voting equipment. We also merged several precincts, and now deploy electronic poll books to all voting sites in order to offer better service to our voters. This staff's dedication to our elections process is to be highly commended. We have a three-member board, Nancy Sharp, Carl Lenz, and Martha Schreutz. These three people have provided support, advice, and the necessary overview of our office to reach timely certifications of every election. While their service may be overlooked by the public, it is a critical component of each election, and they too work as a team to get the job done. Other county staff have been very important in our successes. Many thanks goes to Greg Kronk and the IT staff, George Brown and Lisa Harrington, and Josh Mitchell and the maintenance staff. Their time and assistance have been invaluable. I'm really looking forward to this new phase in my life. I will always think of my time here with great fondness, and wish you all the best in the future. Thank you.
Judy, can we get a picture with your family and you and the plaque? And Ronnie?
Yes, okay. Ms. Judy, I didn't hardly recognize you with your haircut.
My hair is a moving target.
I was like, I didn't know they said Judy Lael. I was like, where is she?
Where is she?
Well, I saw Patrick, and I was like, I know she's back there somewhere.
Patrick and we have board members, all three board members are here.
Yes, we'd like the board members too, please. Nancy, Carl, Martha, would y'all please come up? Patrick, please get included. Judy, you look too young to retire.
This is a good reason. That'll do it. You want to get down first, or you're all?
I know, yeah. Yeah, just.
I want to get the very back.
Come on, Martha.
Very, very back. This is good.
Lord, you can't see her.
Can you see them?
There's no way you can see Martha.
I was trying.
Okay, I'll count to three. One, two, three. Now, one more. One, two, three. Nancy, I mean, Judy can blink herself.
I'm a blinker, sorry.
Sure night, blink all you want to.
Did you get any with my eyes open?
It's right here. Nope.
I blinked again.
Last one, we'll go with this, whatever it is.
Maybe.
That time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Judy. Okay, gentlemen, at this time, we have commissioners' reports. Does anyone have anything to report?
Mr. Chairman, I have a very brief... Anthony Starr is here this evening to do a report. He's the Director of the Western Piedmont Council of Government. And I am... As county commissioners, we all have assignments, I guess you'd say, to committees and other extracurricular activities. And anyway, I have the privilege of being the Commissioner that serves on the Western Piedmont Council of Government Policy Board. And I say the privilege just because I've had the opportunity to learn quite a bit. And when I became a county commissioner, first of all, I'd hear the term COG, and I was like, what's the COG? But I just wanted to say, the Western Piedmont Council of Government, or COG, does a lot for Alexander County and our region. And I think, as you'll see later tonight, when Mr. Starr presents the SEDS report, they do... They've compiled a lot of information, and are a major player in trying to move Alexander County, along with Catawba, Caldwell, and Burke Counties forward. And I just wanted to mention, give the COG a thumbs up, because they do a lot of good work.
That's right.
I'll just say this too. Just want to make sure everybody's aware, next Monday night, October the 9th, we will have a joint meeting with the Alexander County Board of Education for future... Essentially, for some brainstorming, short-term, long-term planning.
As well as CVCC representatives.
Oh, yeah, correct, yeah. And CVCC, hopefully, you know, in an attempt for all of us to...
Get together.
All of us to get together and put our heads together, and do the best we can for the citizens of the county, big and small.
And that meeting will be at the Board of Education, just for point of information. Okay, nothing else. At this time, gentlemen, I entertain a motion to adopt our agenda as presented.
Make a motion, we adopt our agenda as presented.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Those opposed, likewise. Okay. Madam Clerk, nobody signed up for public comment? Okay, noted. At this time, I'll recognize Patricia Baker for a public hearing, call for capital projects, grant resolution, federal section 5310, enhanced mobility of seniors and individuals with disabilities. And, gentlemen, I guess we need a motion to go into public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we go into public hearing to discuss the enhanced mobility of seniors and individuals with disabilities.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. The floor is yours.
Thank you. As you said, I'm Trish Baker. I'm the Director of Social Services. We are before you seeking approval to proceed with a grant, also known as the Federal Section 5310 Grant. This grant would be used to provide transportation services for individuals 60 and older. They would be able to go to nutrition sites, medical appointments, and obtain other essential daily living tasks through this provision of transportation. We did publish a notice of public hearing in the Taylorsville Times, and as of today, we have had no comment on that. The grant we are proposing will be in the amount of $194,592. Of this, 10% will be our county match, which is $19,459. This is for next fiscal year, so we would, with your approval, include that in our budget request as we prepare our next year's budget. So I was here just a few months ago, asking for a similar grant for this year. This will be to sustain us and get us through another fiscal year, and so we're seeking your approval to proceed.
Gentlemen, any questions?
So this is really just a continuance of what you are already doing?
Yes, it would be working with Greenway, and to continue getting individuals to the nutrition sites and all the medical appointments. This would be for individuals who don't qualify for Medicaid, but don't have the means to get themselves to transfer to providers.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Since it's a public hearing, anyone in the audience that has a question can certainly ask that at this time.
Due to transportation outside the county?
Very limited. Well, for medical appointments, yes, but nutrition sites are in the county, so yes.
Okay, good question. Okay, need a motion to approve or go close the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing for federal section 5310, enhanced mobility of seniors. Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of closing the public hearing, please raise your right hand. Those likewise opposed. Okay, at this time, I guess we need approval to apply for the grant for 5310, enhanced mobility of seniors and individuals with disabilities. Would someone like to make that in form of a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve the enhanced mobility of seniors and individuals with disabilities, federal section 5310.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Okay, any discussion on this motion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed likewise. Motion carries. Thank you very much, Trish.
Thank you.
You have a nice evening.
You too.
At this time, I'll recognize Zach Bright, who serves on our ABC Feasibility Committee.
Good evening. My name is Zach Bright. I'm the Vice Chair of the Alexander County ABC Feasibility Committee. We first met on the 15th of August of this year as a group. In attendance to that meeting was Ms. Laurie Lee from the North Carolina ABC Commission, where she covered a variety of information regarding forming an ABC Board, procedures, and economic thresholds involved in opening an ABC store. With the county having already voted for and passed in the last referendum the sale of alcohol through countywide ABC stores, Ms. Lee was clear with the committee that the next step would be to hire an economic advisory agency to complete a feasibility study with the goal of being able to determine baseline data of similar communities with ABC stores, income, taxes, expenses, and profit around those stores. Research retail information regarding leakage of liquor sales leaving the county, gather data from comparable locations to set a scope of startup costs, location selection, and challenges of the operation. So over the course of subsequent meetings of the ABC Feasibility Committee, we contacted a couple of separate firms to give the committee their proposal in expensive conducting a feasibility study. Those two were Western Piedmont Council of Governments and Creative Economic Development Consulting, were the two that both submitted proposals to our committee. From that information, the committee would like to propose that the county commissioners consider funding the Creative Economic Development Consulting Group for the purpose of carrying out a feasibility study. This proposal was based on, from us, the cost of the study, of the quote, was $11,600. The EDC in Alexander County has already worked with this agency in the past, and is pleased with their work. We have some history with that. It's our belief that this information is a foundation that would be needed for decisions going forth, regards to the past referendum of the countywide ABC stores. The deliverables would include a summary report containing startup costs, operation costs, sales revenue, and profitability. The creative team will present its finding to the Board of Commissions. Once greenlighted, the creative consulting feel that they would complete the scope within the work within the scope of 12 weeks, and it would be our request that the commissioners review this proposal and elect to fund the study. And I believe you have a copy. I don't know if everybody has one. So that's where we are.
Yeah, I think by design, we do not have a commissioner that attends those feasibility studies, because we want to remain independent and have them hear the same presentation from the state that we heard after it was passed.
Right.
And so, you know, we appreciate the group serving on that.
Okay.
Questions, gentlemen?
Well, no, Mr. Bright. We've got numbers, like two different ones. So the number from the economic development, is that one of the lower one, the 11, 6?
That's correct.
That's just the first step, I would assume, for the...
That's the... Well, that's from the creative development group, was the 11,006. Western Piedmont, COG, was 13,256. So that's why we selected the creative development, because of expense. The first step would be the feasibility, and then the next step, if we wanted to include them, would be to ask them to help with the placement of the location, demographics based around that. That'll be additional fee, about $5,000, if you choose to do that.
Got to find out the feasibility first, before you go to the location. Yeah.
And, Mr. Chairman, the approval of this would be at the budget amendments, so the commissioners would not need to vote on this during, at this time. We'll have the... When we do the budget amendments, we have a budget amendment just for...
Okay.
Just for this.
Okay. Mr. Bright, maybe you can help me. I don't always quite get it, I guess, but feasibility, what all does that entail? Locations not part of feasibility, but what...
Not locations, it's more broader.
Just purely the amount of potential sales?
It'll look at potential sales within the county. It'll look at what's happening in surrounding counties. It's going to look at similar ABC stores within similar counties, within the state, to see how they operate, what their income is, what their profitability is.
Demographics like ours.
Right, yeah.
And ultimately, it probably going to derive whether or not we go the route of forming our own ABC Board or partnering with somebody. Is that not really to mitigate the risk? Do you partner, or does the study show that it can sustain itself independently? Is that ultimately not...
Yeah, I think the first step is to do the feasibility study, so you've got actual data to work with. Second after that would be to form an actual ABC commission, and then they would be tasked with finding the location and setting that up at that point.
Okay.
Any other questions? So we'll be dealing with the budget amendment.
Yes, sir.
Zach, thank you very much. Thank you for serving on that committee. At this time, I'll recognize Mr. Anthony Starr from the Western Piedmont Council of Governments, the Executive Director.
Thank you, Chairman Campbell and commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to come speak to you tonight about the comprehensive economic development strategy. This is the... I'll refer to it as SEDS going forward. You all should have received what is on the next slide here, a copy of the... It looks like this, with the report. And I'm just hope... Take a few minutes and hope to overview for you the contents of the plan, and see any feedback you may have. Go ahead to the next slide. So that's a copy of the strategy. Make note that we had Rocky Face Park included in the cover. We want to make sure everyone was included as well. Go ahead. So as you may know, the Western Piedmont Council of Governments, and for the benefit of our audience, as the commissioners know, we're a regional planning and economic and service agency. We're owned by the 28 local governments in Burke, Caldwell, Alexander, and Catawba Counties. And one of the functions that we undertake on behalf of our local governments is we serve as the Economic Development District for the region, as designated by the U.S. Economic Development Administration. And we're required to update the SEDS every five years, and this provides a framework for how we spend our efforts on behalf of our local governments, and also serves as a resource to our local governments. Next slide. I'll point out that while there are many very good ideas in the SEDS, we are just one part of the equation. Certainly, the Alexander EDC and many other organizations in our region, the community colleges, the local governments, all play a part in implementing it. And this committee was appointed by our board that Mr. Lael serves on, as a... Appointed 15-member SEDS committee in last November. It's a diverse group of committee members that represent all kinds of walks of life from our region. One of the things that we focused on this time, as you remember us talking to you in previous meetings, is this loss of the age group between 18- and 45-year-olds that we've all experienced throughout our region, and certainly Alexander County's not been immune to that. So the executive committee at the Council of Governments wanted us to make sure that we included folks in that demographic in this planning process, because if we were going to attract that part of the demographic in the country and retain those folks in our region and in our communities, then we needed to have them involved in developing the plan. So as a result, 75% of the committee was under the age of 50, and 50% of the committee was under age 40. Of course, it was split pretty evenly, male and female. All four counties were represented. There's a list of the committee members. I won't read those to you, but they're there in the back of the plan as well, and you can see by looking at their affiliations that it's a pretty diverse group in terms of what they do for a living, as well as their backgrounds. So why is it important? Well, we live in an era of economic transition. We've probably not experienced this much economic shifting since the beginning of the Industrial Revolution. Our economy functions on a regional basis. I'll show you the next slide here, has a map that illustrates this quite well. You've probably seen this map before. This shows the daily commuting patterns amongst our four counties. Each day, 42% of our workforce, of our workers in our four counties, gets up in the morning and goes to work in a county different from the one in which they reside. Now, what does that mean? They don't really look at political boundaries. They really don't mean that much. We talk about it a lot, those of us that work in local government, certainly you do. Those things come up quite often, for a good reason, but the average person out there working, and the average business, they're not thinking about those things quite as often. And our economy certainly functions on a regional basis, and you can see there, the larger the arrow, the more traffic that is occurring in either direction, from one county to another. Next slide. So we use quite a bit of public input through this process. In fact, we did an online survey that received nearly 1,000 respondents. That's quite strong response. And we use that throughout the process in identifying issues and the strategies for our region. I would say that each survey had several open-ended questions, and that meant that we had literally 6,000 or 7,000 typed responses to review. We actually read through each of those more than once, and used that, and summarized that for the committee in its deliberations to develop this plan. So some of the things that came up, of course, education and training, healthcare, these are the opportunities that the public sees. And now, in some of these public input, sometimes they can reflect reality, and sometimes they reflect perceptions. And so that's part of the work that had to be done on some of this as we go through the plan. Does your local government encourage small businesses to locate and grow in your community? 55% said yes. 28% said, "I don't know," and 16, or almost 17%, said no. So what are we dealing with? You've seen this before. I came and spoke to the board last year about housing and population trends. You can see that we've seen... We've actually lost population as a region over the last several years. It's no surprising with the number of jobs we've lost. You can see here on the far right, that circle, you can see our projected growth over the next 20 years in terms of population. It's very, very small. For Alexander County, that's only 3.3%. Not 3.3% each year, 3.3% over 20 years. So that's pretty dismal. It's not really good numbers. However, let me say, that's just a projection. And a projection is simply taking current trends and carrying them forward. It doesn't mean that's what will actually play out, and if we're successful in implementing some of the strategies in the SEDS, I think we'll improve those numbers significantly over time. Here's another number that is kind of part of the profile that we went over with the committee, and talking about them with... Talking with them about population and economic trends. You know this, you've experienced this. We lost over 40,000 jobs from the year 2000 and the year 2015. I'll note here on the manufacturing line, you'll see that in 2000, 34% of our workforce was directly employed in manufacturing. At one point, that was almost 60% for our region. It's now down to 28%. You might say, well, maybe we've hit bottom. The reality is, is that perhaps we have, but maybe not. And the reason why I say that is the national average for employment in manufacturing is only 9% for the average community. So if we're not aggressive in trying to maintain what we have and grow what we have, we still have ground to lose, a substantial amount of ground to lose. And so I'm not saying that we will, I'm just saying we shouldn't take that for granted. Next slide. So what has happened with our labor force? On this chart, you'll see the green bars represent the size of the labor force, those that are able and willing to work in our region. You can see that it's decreased over time. This is not unique to our region. Baby boomers are retiring. Other folks dropped out of the workforce for a variety of reasons, but you can see that the labor force has been shrinking, and the last year, though, actually started to increase again, so that's a positive sign. You can see in the blue bars, that's the number of actually employed persons, and so the difference between those two charts, or those two bars, I should say, is the unemployment rate. And you can see, over time, most of our unemployment rate dropped because of the decrease in labor force, but in the last few years, we've actually experienced real growth in employment, and that's a positive trend. Next slide shows our unemployment rate here. You can see in 2010, it was 13.7% for our region. It was actually close to 17% at the peak, right after the recession of 2007, 2008, and of course, it's down to 3.9% now. So as the committee did its work and studied these... So as the committee did its work and studied these areas, it identified six subject areas that it came up with 25 different strategies. Those include economic development, workforce, infrastructure, housing, marketing, and community life, or quality of life. Economic development is the first category I'll briefly cover. You can see here that we've, we've had positive employment change in the last four years. 5.7% increase. That's positive. It's, it's, it's ahead of a number of regions of the 15 metropolitan areas. We're better than average. But you can say, looking at that, we're certainly not the super-hot markets that you might suspect of the typical characters like Raleigh and Wilmington and Charlotte and Chapel Hill Durham area. It's not explosive growth like they're experiencing, but it's, it's modest, solid growth in the last few years. At the same time, we looked at poverty rates. Those are, of course, tied in with our, our job numbers. You can see here that since 2000, our poverty rates have increased. They peaked in 2010. They've started to drop down for, for all ages and for, for overall population and for the under 18. But you can see here at our peak in 2010, and still almost that at 22.3%. Almost 1 in 4 children in our, in our region live below the poverty line. So one of the recommendations they, that the SEDs committee came up with was the construction of shell buildings. Of course, Alexander County's been a leader in this respect. You had a successful announcement a few months ago with that. I think more of that is needed. One of our counties did a study on economic development activity, and they determined that 80% of, last year, 80% of the requests that came down from prospective businesses were for shell buildings that were ready to go, or almost ready to go, between 50 and 100,000 square feet. And we have almost no inventory in our region meeting that criteria. Now, and, and this can be done a number of ways, certainly like you did here with the Railroad Corporation was a successful model. Catawba County's got a different way. I think Caldwell's entertaining, starting the same program. And what the committee said is we ought to have, here's a couple of pictures of some of them. One that's under construction in Claremont, of course, the one here in, in Taylorsville. The, is that we ought to have one in the planning stages, one under construction, and one available at all times for our region if we're going to be successful. Because otherwise, if we don't have the product available, then, then we're not going to be successful in that way. And one might say, "Well, is this the role of local government?" I don't know. Perhaps, perhaps not. That's, that's above my pay grade. I can tell you that it's like many years ago when, when certainly Rick, you go back 20 years earlier in our careers, economic development involved maybe just providing cash incentives. Maybe it just had the zoning, then it became, you got to have the zoning in place. And then you got to have the water and sewer to the site. And then you got to have the sat, the site graded. Now they want you to have the building ready. It's just, we don't get to choose the market conditions, but those are the market conditions we find ourselves in if we want to be competitive. So another one is, it deals with staffing capacity we have at the COG. Frankly, right now, we're stretched quite thin as far as economic development, grant writing and administration goes. We've added a new person this month, a new position. And so we want to keep and maintain that on your behalf. Building reuse grants have been quite successful. We want to keep momentum going in that direction. And then, of course, the Manufacturing Solutions Center right down the road in Conover has been a tremendous asset for our region, as well as the Engineering Technology Center and the new campus for, Morgantown Campus for the North County School of Science and Mathematics. If you're not, if you're not aware of that, that's a huge win for our region. It may not be located in Alexander County, but it's, it's going to be tremendously successful for our region and bring a lot of highly educated faculty into the region, as well as bringing in the best and brightest students in our state. And they're going to, they're going to call part of their childhood home here as a residential high school. And they've selected their, their site at our next mayor manager's meeting, which actually be here in Taylorsville coming up later this month. We'll actually have the director for the Morgantown Campus come and give us an update and show you the plans that they have for the site. They've selected it to be on the eastern ridge of the North County School for the deaf there in Morgantown. Workforce is another category. Like, you saw the chart there. Those are, we have real and perceived issues. We have interest gaps. We have skill gaps. We have challenges that many communities are experiencing. And this is probably one of those areas where our efforts will give us a competitive advantage if we figure out how to best use our limited resources. So a couple of public input. How well does your community work to maintain a skilled workforce? 43% said adequate. Another 57% said poor or good. 15, 16% said good and 35% said poor. Do you believe there are gaps in educational resources? Almost half said yes. Educational attainment still matters. We talk a lot about the value of college education. These statistics here are for people in our region, age 25 and above, according to their education level. You'll see there, as the education levels increase, the income increases as well. There's a curious anomaly there that you'll note, is that those with some or, some college or associate's degrees actually have less income than those with only a high school graduate attainment level. Well, you wonder why that might be. Our, our theory is this, is that a higher percentage of our baby boomers have only a higher high school education or equivalent. And many of our younger workers have some college or associate's degree. The baby boomers are at the end of their career, at where they're earning the most in their career usually. And whereas our younger population, it tends to be a little bit more educated with, and that's national trends, the whole true far area, they're early in their career, their earning potential's less because they have less experience. As I think, I think that's what explains it. It's not big, that much of a difference, but it, but it's, it's worth noting.
Question on it. Do you think the leakage of our younger workforce, if you compared those same levels to, say, Charlotte, Mecklenburg, or Raleigh, or Wilmington, I'd assume those wages would be up. Would that be something that y'all think is part of that leakage of the young?
Yeah, I think that very well could be a contributing factor because as younger folks have education, if there's not job opportunities where they're from, either they won't return from college, or they'll leave once they get educated. And we've certainly seen that with our outmigration patterns. We've lost, with the recession that we experienced in 2008, we saw a great outflow of population. And those tended to be those that were economically and educated folks who were mobile and can move out, and tended to be more educated, more affluent parts of our population. So infrastructure is another category. Of course, economic development's greatly influenced by that. And it's a condition of being successful with our economic development recruitment efforts. Next slide. It's one of the areas that we focus a lot of our attention on, your behalf. At the council of governments, last year, we were successful in receiving $10 million in grants for 30 different projects. It leveraged an additional $75 million in private investment and almost 300 jobs. So what do we need to do regarding infrastructure? Well, transit-oriented development. In our rural areas, maybe this isn't as important, but certainly in our urban areas, that's an important aspect. Perspective employers are asking about this now. Bicycle and pedestrian networks, trails, parks, all tied in, tie in with that. Fixed route transportation, public transportation is also important to, to extend that and have that operating in as many municipalities as possible in our region. I'll note that many of the national companies that come looking for sites here, they really don't think about the historical stigma that we have with busing here in the South. So they look at that as an asset, not a liability or a negative thing. Continuing with infrastructure, we, John Marshall, our, our planning director and his staff, work really hard on this front with serving as your, your MPO, your Metropolitan Planning Organization, responsible for transportation planning in the region. And we try to real hard about being smart about how we submit our transportation projects for Alexander County and our other communities to make sure that they're in a way that is competitive and we get our projects funded as soon as possible. It's a very data-driven process now with DOT. And so it's, it's pretty sophisticated. And so we work real hard about trying to get our projects. And sometimes that means dividing up projects. I know, like Highway 16, doing some pavement widening and shoulder improvements and, and other safety improvements along the entire corridor of Alexander County is one of the road projects. We recent, at our last meeting earlier last week, we decided to break that into two projects because we feel like the southern segment of 16 will score better and will have a chance of getting the project funded sooner than if we left the whole 16 corridor and it's one project from all the way from Wilkes County to Catawba County, for example. Healthy housing market is also key. You, you, last year, I spoke to you at depth about this. You know the, the differences, the decreases in homeownership rates that we've experienced, but also the increases in vacant housing. We've seen our vacant housing nearly double to 13.7%. About half of that 13.7% or a little over 10,000 homes in our region are just sitting there. They're not for rent. They're not for sale. They're not vacation homes or seasonal homes. And how does that play into things? Well, housing construction is a big part of any local community's economy. And unfortunately, we've got a couple of statistics there that reflect poorly on our region. And it's, it's directly related to our job situation, I believe, over the last 15, 20 years. And we've had, of the 15 metro areas in the state, we have had, we have the highest percentage of housing constructed before 1980. Why is that important? Well, we know that after you get to that, nearing that 40-year age, which it is, that maintenance becomes really important about whether a home is still viable and a problem for a neighborhood or a community. And so you start seeing a lot more maintenance problems that really drag down property values. In addition, we've also, out of those 15 metro areas, we're ranked number 15 in terms of number of new homes constructed since the year 2000, which is last. We don't like to see that. It's a problem we need to work on. And there's a conversations going on in the region. Both we have established a vacant housing task force to look at this issue about the vacant homes. At the same time, we have all these vacant homes, but we also need new homes constructed because the homes that we do have are, is, is not what the, the, the population is seeking oftentimes. And Commissioner Lael knows this very well from his profession. Housing. So we're going to keep working on reducing the number of vacant homes. There's a variety of reasons why they're vacant. Mother or father could have passed away, and the family hasn't done anything with the home. The, the homeowner might have lost their jobs, might have lost their jobs in their home and moved out. It was in the process of foreclosure. Maybe the bank hasn't followed through on that. It may be just sitting there. It may be in the bank's name. It may not. But it's not on the market to get it turned over to someone else. So those are a couple of common things. How does this affect us? Well, all these things are affecting that 18- to 45-year-old age demographic. Of the 15 metro areas, you can see here, between 2000 and 2015, we lost 22.5% of the population in that age range. That's the worst in the state. That's a reflection of the large number of manufacturing jobs that we lost. And so we need to turn that around. Certainly, there's some peculiar regions in the state that, that have that. You say, "Well, why is Jacksonville so high?" Well, what's in Jacksonville? Camp Lejeune. So theirs is very much tied to the military deployments ending and folks coming, soldiers or Marines, I should say, coming back home. So they've seen big increases there. Other areas, Raleigh, all those universities there. Wilmington's at the beach. There's, there's a variety of reasons why each region's seen success or decline in that category. This one shows the population trends, as I, as I showed before. Over the next 20 years, if all trends continue, Alexander County won't lose population, but it won't see much gain if, if things don't change. So marketing is a key component that we talked a lot about with the SEDs committee. We have really, it occurs to me, four different audiences. We have prospective businesses, prospective residents, people that don't live here or work here that we want to attract. But then we also have our current residents and our current businesses. And frankly, there's a negative narrative out there. We have a lot of positive attributes for our counties in our region. And we need to figure out some strategies to improve our own perception. Because if we, if our own residents don't feel good about what we have here, that's going to be really hard to attract new, new residents and new businesses. And so that's something that needs to be taken on. In addition to that, you think about the assets that Alexander County has. When a person chooses to live here, you've got tremendous assets. You've got beautiful views here. You've got Rocky Face Park, other amenities and services here. But you also have Catawba County, and you have Caldwell County, and you have festivals in other towns. And so although you've got great festivals in Taylorsville here, with the Apple Festival and so on, people also travel to Valdez for a festival or Lenore. And so we ought to count and capture those things, whether it's Wilson's Creek in Caldwell County or whatever. People get to take advantage of that wherever they happen to live in our region. And we, and we ought to promote that because our assets together as a region are much stronger than it are, than they are as individual counties. Community life or quality of life is the, is the other category. We need to, you know, part of what came through in the discussions from the SEDs committee with it being a variety of people from a variety of backgrounds and walk of life was the encompassed opportunities for public participation in the decision-making process. You know, I've been doing, I've been working in the local government myself for 22 years now. And I can tell you, there's, there's, people talk a lot about, "Well, you know, Town Hall doesn't listen," or "The county commissioners don't listen." And the reality is, you know, that almost every agenda, you've got some sort of public input or public hearing. And I, I've watched too many times where one person show up to a public meeting and turn the direction of the entire board. And so they certainly welcome that public input. I feel like almost all of our elected officials welcome public input. We've got to be smart about how we reach out and make sure everyone feels like they at least have the opportunity, whether they take advantage of that opportunity or not. Downtown revitalization is a, is a key term. Some of the most successful areas in our state and in our community involve strong, robust downtowns. It's an attractive part of recruiting new businesses. And new businesses today aren't just asking about what's your, what's your cash incentives? What's your infrastructure? What's the site and grading cost going to be? They're also asking, "Do I want my employees to live in your community?" And that's a key change. It's really happened in the last 10 years. And that's turned a lot of what we're doing with economic development on its head. And we have to rethink about some of our priorities and making sure that our communities are as desirable as possible because it will affect the businesses that we try to recruit to come to our region. Next slide. We're a diverse, we're as diverse now as a region as we've ever been. 87% white, 7.1% African-American, 7% Hispanic, and 3.2% Asian. Interesting note there. Very shortly, for our region, the Hispanic population will become the largest minority group for our region. Next slide. We're also growing older. We have a lot of baby boomers that are moving up in age. You can see here, in the last 15 years, we've experienced a 56% increase in folks aged 65 to 74, a 30% increase from folks aged 75 to 84, and 44% increase in people living older than 85. So what does that mean? Well, there's a lot of positive opportunities with that in terms of attracting retirees and all the talent and assets that these folks bring, and their time to, to donate their time and volunteer for our communities. But it also means significant service requirements and challenges for our local governments, whether that be EMS and other types of medical care and facilities. So it's both positive and challenges that we're going to have to address with that happening. And that's not unique to our region or to Alexander County as well.
Anthony, how does that relate to the 3.3% growth that we're going to, that we're projected to experience?
Right. So that, that's a really good observation, Commissioner, that, that we're, while we're losing younger population, we're experiencing older population increases. And so that means we're losing labor force potentially for the future. And you got two opposite directions happening there at the same time with our population. We're getting older because the people we already have that are here are getting older by staying in place while those mobile younger people are leaving and we're, or we're not retaining them, bringing them back when, when they graduate college.
Seems to be more of a shift than, you know, than growth, than growth or...
It, it is both. I mean, it's, it's a shift in terms of the population we have. Baby boomers being, you know, well, they're not as big as the millennial generation any longer, but they were for a long time. And they're get, and the baby boomers are getting older. So they're staying in place and they're getting older. So our population, as an average, is getting older. And we're not bringing in as many young people. There's a lot of national trends on that front as well. So this is all relative. Everyone's experiencing that. But you want a more healthy balance in terms of what we're experiencing. experiencing.
But seeing the numbers as they are, then you would be wise to look at things that serve the elder...
Right.
People.
Yeah, and that, exactly. I think that's, that's the point. They bring a lot of resources with them and time and talent, but they also, we have senior service centers, our area agency on aging that the COG operates on your behalf with Meals on Wheels funding, and home respite care, family caregiver support, those are all services that are going to see increasing demands on that funding and those services that, as that population gets older.
I guess, on the other hand, you would see the need for younger services such as school systems, possibly continued declining population, which creates another set of...
Right.
You're going to spin one way or the other.
Yeah, I mean, you're not the only county that's seen declines in student population in the public school system. And so that brings its own set of challenges. And so we have these buildings and this capacity and these budgets that we have to support. And, you know, much of our funding's tied to the student population sizes in our school system. And so if, as that declines, so do our revenues from the state. But those facility costs and overhead costs don't decline. And so I think that's why retaining more of that eighteen to forty-five-year-old age group will help in that respect by, you know, best utilizing the school capacity that we already have in terms of physical structures. So I'll skip over this slide here, just for time's sake. One other thing I want to mention, you know, compared to most of our boards, you're quite young in our region. And a number, and so...
I say it often about this group.
This is a challenge that frankly, that we have now because we know, we look at the demographics of our elected leaders throughout the region, and we know that we're, there's going to be a lot of change over the next several years as a result of that. And so we, SEDS committee says, "What are we doing to cultivate those next leaders? Are we grooming people that might serve on our various committees, that might serve in elected capacity? Are we being intentional about getting them ready?" You all know that the first time you came on as an elected official, it was probably be drinking water out of a fire hose for a while. Well, we can, we can help that curve, that learning curve with them if we're intentional about grooming folks to serve on our elected official boards and other appointed positions in our, throughout our communities. And so we have to think about succession planning. Who's the next in line, perhaps? And I say that because some of our local governments struggle to get anyone to even file for open positions. I can tell you, one of our municipalities, this, with the current election, no one filed for an open seat. No one. So what does that mean? There won't be an election for that seat. And after the election, the council's going to have to appoint someone to fill that seat. And so you want more than that for all of our communities. Create robust downtowns, as I mentioned before, is an important aspect as well. Next slide. Healthy living initiatives. There's a lot more interest in outdoor activities and recreation opportunities. And of course, you know, you know the issues with opioid abuse and illicit drug use and how it is impacting our region particularly. This is not a health or criminal justice study, but the SEDS committee felt like it was important to acknowledge that issue because it does have economic impacts for our region. Right now, we're going through presentations. This is actually the first day that I've started presentations of the SEDS since our board adopted it last Tuesday. So at this time, I'll be glad to answer any questions. If there's particular groups you'd like me to present this information to down the road, please let me know. So I'll be glad to answer any questions. Thank you for your time tonight as well.
Just a lot of good information, and it's kind of hard to really take it all in at one time, but I appreciate the work y'all have done on it and, you know, being involved with the COGS. So, and much said, there kind of, and I'm on the VA Health Committee also. And the opioids is really, you know, that's something that we really need to be looking at pretty hard because it is driving and going to continue to drive a lot of cost.
Sure, definitely.
Appreciate your work on this.
Well, thank you for your ongoing support for the council of governments. We often say this, we're not some separate organization. We are an extension of you and your staff and your resources. And so we appreciate the support you show to us, and we were always eager to provide the best value to you and everything that we do. So please call me if you have any questions about this or in any other way that we can help you.
Well, I know you've been helpful, I know, in our, sometimes in our business, is we'll seek data and trends when we're trying to evaluate something. And your group and your team are very good to give us traffic counts and information like this that help you make a better decision. So I would say thank you for that.
Thank you.
Oh, and I have, if anybody in the audience would like copies, I have extra copies of the plan if you'd like to take a copy tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Starr.
At this time, I'll recognize Ms. Allison Brown, North Carolina Cooperative Extension Presentations, and this has to do with agriculture in Alexander County. And I think it's rather startling to understand the economic impact it has in Alexander County.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I am Allison Brown, and I was born and raised here in Alexander County, went off to college, come back here to work and raise my family. So I think it's a great place to live and work. And I'm very passionate about agriculture. I grew up on a farm here in Alexander County, continue to live on a farm today and operate a farm. That's one of the points I enjoyed your presentation. I couldn't catch on the committee if there was an agriculture person representing agriculture on your committee because that's a very strong part of our community here in our county, involvement and the money coming into Alexander County. So, but that's just something I'm very passionate about, and it's a huge part of Alexander County, is our agriculture. So, next slide, please. So some of the things I do in my work, I love my job, I get to have a lot of fun, and I get to work with a lot of different people. And so these are some of the things that I get to work and teach kids about. So I wanted to see if you could recognize any of these things.
One of the center's meat.
It is. Very good. It is big. Do you know the particular cut? That's something the kids have to identify. It's actually skirt steak. Okay, so if you eat fajitas, it's in those, it's skirt steak.
I was going to say that, but you didn't give me a chance.
Oh, man. So sorry, so sorry.
I was going to say number twelve's an ear piercer.
It's an ear tagger. It is. So that we can, so we can identify our cattle, our livestock, so that we know if they get out or get missing, we can be able to identify them. And also for cattlemen to be able to keep records because they have to do, keep records and have reports as well. And then, of course, on the left is, that is a feed that we feed our cattle, and that's barley. So I work with kids and a group, and we study these things, and they learn a lot. And these are all things that are used on farms here in Alexander County or a product of farms here in Alexander County. So on the next page, you'll see one of our success stories. This is a group of kids that I've worked with for several years now, the older ones anyway, the younger ones just this last year. They participated in the state junior quiz bowl and skillathon competition and placed third in both competitions in the state, so we're really proud of that. These kids have a lot of knowledge in their head. And Clay actually placed fifth overall out of all the individuals in the competition. So just a great group of kids that are really interested in agriculture and just a good product of our future. And if you know that Alexander County is strong in livestock production, and we ranked thirteenth in beef cattle production and fifth in dairy production. In two thousand and fifteen, livestock, dairy, and poultry had cash receipts of a hundred and eighty, over a hundred and eighty-eight million dollars. And that put our county, our county size only ranks eighty-eighth out of all the counties in North Carolina in land area. And that put us in ninth place for the state in ag income. So that's a significant amount of money. Investing in our youth in agriculture for the future of Alexander County, and that's what I hope that I'm being a part of. Next. Alexander County Cooperative Extension, along with the Alexander County Soil and Water. We wrote a grant to work together to be able to purchase a weed wiper for the folks in Alexander County, the agriculturalists, to be able to use. We also partnered with the Alexander County Cattlemen's Association to find the rest of the money to suit, to fulfill this cost. This will help our producers be able to control weeds on their farms with much less chemical use and be a reduced cost to them in their overall budget. So that's, we're glad to be able to do that, but more friendly on the environment and the pocketbook. So that's what we're looking for.
How does a weed wiper work?
Oh, well, that's very interesting. So we put the chemical in the container, the tank that you see there. And then there's a roller, like a, kind of like a roll of carpet, like a carpet drum, and the chemical soaks into the carpet, and then you drive it along and it hits the top of the weeds and it hits this chemical, the substance soaks into the weed, and then the weed takes in the chemical and the plant will die. It'll target the ones we want. So you can either use a broadleaf chemical in there to kill broadleaves, or if you want to kill everything, like in between orchard passes and things like that, you can, of course, use Roundup to kill everything.
But you don't have any overspray going on the ground?
No, and, you know, now we have so much more problems with, with volatilization of chemicals, especially in the summertime with the heat and things. And for instance, at my farm, I have some tobacco planted right behind me. So I can't just spray whatever I want to because on a hot day, if that volatilizes, means move up into the air and then goes over and sits down on that tobacco, well, I would be responsible for it. So we would like to not have to pay for that. So this is a much better way for us to be more economical and purposeful in our spraying and be able to control it. So we're proud to be able to offer that to be, for farmers to be able to rent out and use because we currently do not have one available here in the county. Okay, foothills forage tour. Last year, we started our first foothills forage tour. We hosted the first one. We have a lot of progressive farmers here in our county. Forage, of course, is the main base diet for cattle and livestock here in the county. So we were happy to be able to showcase what other farmers are doing, and, you know, they're very progressive. So we were able to highlight two stops last year here in the county, and then this year, Wilkes County hosted it. So we were able to go up there and see what those farmers out there have been doing. So we were seeing, last year, we saw some crabgrass. Yes, we actually purposely planted some crabgrass. It's a very good source of summer forage for our cattle to eat. And then this summer, we went and seen a farm that plants Bermuda grass. So, yes, we purposely planted that too. So that was good for us, the farmers, to be able to see and get ideas because farmers have some really good ideas. So it's good to share those ideas and get them from other folks. So that's what I've had going on and got going on. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to come and share and, you know, keep agriculture on the forefront and in your mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison.
Thank you.
Next, we have family and consumer. And I will mispronounce your name. Is it Dur?
Yeah, you got it perfectly. The way I always say it, say under, take out the un, and it's Dur. My last name's a lot easier to pronounce. Let me introduce myself. So I'm Dur Holcomb. I'm the new Family Consumer Science Agent for the North Carolina Cooperative Extension Services here in Alexander County. And I started back in March, and so thank you so much for just giving me this opportunity just to kind of present what I've been doing during that time to now. Thanks. The first program I wanted to share with you is just what I've been doing with the Taylorsville Learning Center. Lenny and I have been working back in about March with about fourteen kids on teaching them how to garden and how to harvest those vegetables. And we taught them, as you can see the picture right there, they grew some vegetables in our raised beds in the back of the office. And we also brought, harvested some of those vegetables, brought them back in and taught them how to cook them as well, too. We made a little kale salad and let them taste test, and it just will, too. I also went with, and worked with them as well, too, on a nutrition program where the students learned how to properly wash their hands and parts the different components of my plates. As you can see in the picture, we also made some freezer, some strawberry freezer jams. Next. The next thing I want to share with you is Catawba River Farm School, which is part of the North Carolina Farm School. The goal of North Carolina Farm School is to allow a pathway to success for farms to generate profitable businesses. And what they did is it's a seven-month-long program, but it has eight business sessions and six field days. The business sessions focus on different areas of developing a business plan from financial management to defective marketing strategies. The field days are led by innovative farmers and agricultural participants, and these were some of the pictures that we took from the different farms. I should mention as well, too, that the Catawba River Farm School is actually an area program. So it's Catawba, Alexander, Gaston, Lincoln, and it's farmers from all those areas as well. We had a total of twenty-three participants this year, and in our pre-evaluation of those twenty-three participants, we found out that ninety-one percent of them have never written a business plan. Ninety-five percent has no experience with marketing, balance sheets, income statements, cash flow, and enterprise budget. When we asked about their confidence in writing a general business plan, seventy-seven percent felt moderately confident in writing a business plan. We had a total of fourteen who graduated from this program. And in order to be considered as a North Carolina Farm School graduate, you need to complete eighty percent of the homework that we give out as well as, or, I'm sorry, or complete fifty percent of a business plan. And so we had fourteen who graduated. Of those graduated, eighty-three percent said they felt very confident in writing a business plan, and seventy-five percent stated that they found new market opportunities as a result of North Carolina Farm School. Next. The next program I want to share with you is just the Healthy Living Series, and it is a three-part series in partnership with the Plants for Human Health Institute in Kannapolis. Because of some issues, we had to shorten it down from a three-program to a two-program instead, and we just finished it last Tuesday. We had a total of fourteen participants, and the program taught our participants about inflammation, prebiotics, probiotics, micronutrients, macronutrients, and synergistic eats. Our evaluations show that ninety percent of the participants in attendance are actually not consuming their recommended daily intake of fruits and vegetables. And so upon the completion of the program, when we evaluated them again, a hundred percent of them said that they plan to eat more fruits and vegetables, about twenty-five percent more of what they're actually currently consuming right now. During the workshop, the participants were able to taste test some of the recipes that the Plants for Human Health Institute develop, and they plan to make at least one of those recipes. You can see in that image right there, I know it looks weird, but it's actually a blueberry salsa, and it was actually very, very tasty as well. And that was one of the ones that they really enjoyed, along with a mango walnut tart as well. Next slide. Just some extra programming efforts that we did this year. We had two pressure canning lid testing, and that was actually hosted out at True Value in their parking lot where it was open to the public to come and bring their dial gauge pressure canning lid to be tested. I also partnered with Catawba to put on a school garden train-the-trainer where we shared different school garden curriculums with teachers, volunteers, and other educators within the foothills areas as well, too. We're still in the process of evaluating how successful we've been and whether anyone's adopted the curriculum that we shared. The other thing that I'm working with Lenny on is a farm-to-child care program with the Partnership for Children as well as Lulu's and Richmond Center. And so one of the things I've done so far is gone out to Lulu's and trained the teacher kind of on some different things they can do. One of them was making different types of salad dressing. What I was told was that a lot of the students had just dipped their vegetables that they harvested from the garden outside in ranch. And so these are just some tastier, healthier options for the kids to try out. Next. And the last thing I just want to share is just some of the upcoming programs. We have a preserving the harvest workshop coming up. We actually have our first one starting tomorrow, and it's on basic canning as well. And some of the other ones that we're doing is on jams and jellies, dehydration, and pickling and fermentation. The other thing is we are finished, we are starting a new program, nutrition program with the Learning Center at Taylorsville Elementary, and we're actually going to use the Try Healthy curriculum from NCANT State University to implement with them on nutrition. Safe Plates. So Safe Plates is very similar to Surf Safe, if you heard of that. That's for the Certified Food Protection Manager Program here, like the different restaurants. And so instead of doing Surf Safe, we'll be doing Safe Plates. Safe Plates is actually developed by NC State, and so what we're doing is basically just very similar to that, just a different organization that published the curriculum. Last thing we have is Speedway to Healthy, that is coming November the fourteenth and fifteenth, and it's the exhibit, and third graders will be able to go through the whole human body and kind of gain some stuff from that as well. And we are still looking for volunteers, so if you commissioners want to join in and have a little fun with us that day, you're more than welcome to attend as well, too. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This time, I'll recognize Kristy Kraus, 4-H and Youth.
Hi, I am Kristy Kraus with the Alexander Cooperative Extension 4-H Agent. Some, summertime is a very busy time... Some, summertime is a very busy time for 4H. So just some highlights of opportunities that youth had this summer. There was a cloverbud camp. That's for youth ages five to nine. And they went several different places. They went to Rocky Face, they went to Suncrest Water Park, they traveled to Zoo Tastic Animal Park, the Statesville Fitness Center to do some indoor rock climbing, and the Statesville Leisure Pool. They went to the Science Center one day and did some activities. Another program that we had was Farm to Fork. And in Farm to Fork, the youth go out and they learn how food goes from the farm to your table. So we went out to local farms each day and they picked vegetables and fruits. And then they came back to the Extension Center and they learned how to cook and make something with that. And then take the recipes home. We also had Kids in the Kitchen. With Kids in the Kitchen, the youth are learning basic cooking skills and food safety skills. This year, the theme was foods from around the world. So they learned foods from different countries and recipes and their culture as they went to Kids in the Kitchen. Next. Another opportunity is 4H Congress. And 4H Congress was held in Raleigh. It was held July 29th through August 1st. Over 500 youth from North Carolina attend. And they have activities for leadership, for citizenship, service opportunities. And for Alexander County, Sarah Perry and Annabeth Harris represented us. And Sarah Perry was actually inducted into the 4H Honor Club, which is one of the highest honors a 4H'er can achieve. So they were tapped in during the candlelight service on that Saturday night. And next. Other activities we had were STEM Day. STEM, of course, stands for our science, technology, engineering, and math. So they had a day where they had hands-on activities. We also had 4H2O. 4H2O camp was all week. And it dealt with water and related environmental issues. They went canoeing, they went to several creeks, and they tested the water and learned about those environmental issues. Discovery Days, we partner with Caldwell and Catawba County. And we go and discover each county. So we went to Divine Farms in Catawba County. We went to Tuttle State Park. And then we went to Rocky Face here in Alexander. So summertime's always very busy for 4H. And those are just a few of the camps we had. Now, starting off, we have, now that school started, we have our after-school programs. And so after-school, go once a month to the following elementary schools. Stony Point, Ellendale, Taylorsville, Sugarloaf, and Wittenburg. And so we'll go do our after-school program for them. Also partnering with the communities and schools, doing reading partners. So I will go to Ellendale, Wittenburg, and Hidnite each week and work with their reading partners program. And Ellendale and Hidnite also have a Leader in Me program. And they have a time of their day where they have clubs and groups to individualize for the students. So I will also go there and have a 4H club for those interested in 4H during those schools. But I appreciate all your support for 4H and our youth.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christy.
Thank you.
Last but not least, I'll recognize Mr. Lenny Rogers, Director, who will talk about horticulture.
Okay.
First of all, I just want to thank you for letting us all give an update to our department. And we are a staff of five, and you've seen three, I'm four, and the only one missing is Julie Campbell, our Administrative Assistant. And I just want to share, as far as the way our agency is funded, we're half-funded by the county, half-funded by NC State University, as in, as is Extension and all other 100 counties in the state. Okay, I just want to share a little bit on my program areas. One of those in horticulture that I deal with is Master Gardeners. I teach the Master Gardener Program in our county. And in the past years, we've done that with Caldwell County. And we do basically 12 weeks, 40 hours of instruction. And if they want to be a certified master gardener, they have to return 40 hours of service to the community. So that's in all phases. Diseases, insects, pruning, whatever. Next. And we do some outside activities with them as well. You know, pruning, propagation, torn a few gardens, things of that nature. Okay, next. One thing I did help with this year is the Hazardous Household Waste Day we do in the county. We also, in conjunction with that, do a pesticide collection day, unwanted, old pesticides. And we took in about 700 pounds of unwanted pesticides this year there. Next. Another thing we work with is the community gardens in the county. Our master gardeners actually have constructed these. This is the one that's down behind the Mobile Home Park, below Town Hall Baseball Field. And there is 16 beds there. Next. You can see they can hold a lot of produce in those beds. And they're rented out to individuals for $15 each. This is the community garden at the high school. And there's 20 beds there. And the community can rent those as well. And the high school students use some of those beds. And we're looking at putting another community garden in at Northwood, up near Northwoods Park. The townhouse in property and wants to put one in there. This just shows a little demonstration went in at one of our apple growers. There's a strip, actually, and look at the next picture, it's sunflowers. See how big they got? Next. And the reason we planted that is because they draw in the brown marmarated stink bugs. So the grower can lure them into that area and then spray them. That's a little demonstrate research project we did there. Next, this is a little-
How effective was that?
So-so, not the greatest. We'd like, it does draw them in, but not as well as we would have liked to have seen. But that's only one particular variety of sunflower that's gigantuous. They tend to do a better job than the smaller sunflowers.
Where can we get some of those?
You can order them online. We can help you get some.
Like a project?
This is a demonstration at The Farmer's Daughter. This is rhubarb, this is plants we've got from the research station. We're doing a field demonstration there on that. And last slide I've got here is just of our farmer's market. And it's been located there in the old hospital lots. You know, in the future, I know we're moving into the new building in the future, somewhere uptown, near the park. We'd love to find a new location for this farmer's market, just to give you something to think on. We usually run the market from mid-June to, on into September. And we just like to get a little bit away from the yard sellers there and get a more clean family market. So just looking for a better spot, just throwing that out there. Couple of other things I just wanted to mention while I'm here. In the past, we've had an area poultry agent to serve the poultry growers in our county. And we recently, they recently have hired one. It's Lauren Green, she's going to be housing in Wilkesboro. And she's serving our area, along with several other counties. But we're one of the larger counties she's serving. That used to be paid for roughly a third or fifth by our county. But that's all, that position is now totally state-funded. Just wanted to mention that. But there is someone in that, the old Kathy Button position that used to run that. I do want to mention, there is a grower request for an area tree fruit agent. I've shared that letter with Rick. About several years ago, we, Bill Hanlon served, we paid about a fifth of his salary to serve as a tree fruit agent for our county. And he became the county director in Wilkes County and continued to do some of those duties. Put on a winter tree fruit school, do a lot of scab and coddle and moth predictability reports and things for the growers. But he just retired. And they replaced that position just with a general horticulture agent. So there really is no expertise for the tree fruit growers. So Perry Low III, along with the apple, I know the deals had a little bit of input, drafted a letter from the apple growers requesting some funding. And the university's looking at that. I just want to let you know that that's out there and the requests for some of the growers. I don't know where that's going to go. But I do want to say, we appreciate you incorporating us into the new building that's being designed. And the office and kitchen space seems very adequate. The meeting, new meeting room looks good. We're looking forward to working closely with some other departments in that building. And one of our only concerns is storage. And I know that's kind of tight in there. So just, I know there was some talk about some possible outside storage and some of that. So I just encourage the county to look at trying to develop that too, along the outside of that building. And I just want to thank you again for your support. And we're proud to serve the youth, the families, and the agriculture community in Alexander County. Any questions?
Questions?
Good to meet you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lenny.
Thanks, guys.
At this time, I'll recognize County Manager Rick French.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We need to schedule a public hearing at Stony Point Elementary School on either October 23rd or October 24th at 6:00 PM. The reason is for, we're going to apply for a CDPG Sewer Grant for Stony Point Elementary School. And we'll need to have the public hearing there. If we stay with our Monday trend, October 23rd would be sort of follow our Monday meetings for October. And if you're going to do that, we need a motion to set that date. At that time.
So on Monday, it's a Monday or Tuesday. I see you checking your calendars.
Mm-hmm. I'm fine either way. Monday's good. If we want to keep our Mondays, that's-
This is good.
Let's do that.
So we need a motion to that effect.
Make a motion that we schedule a public hearing for Stony Point Elementary School on October the 23rd.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion about this motion? Are you done? All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Opposed, likewise? Motion carries. Also, Rick French, Budget Ordinance Amendments, number 12 through number 18.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget Amendment Number 12 is the budget for the estimated cost of a feasibility study related to a potential new ABC store. That's the feasibility study that we had talked about in Alexander County. We had originally budgeted the 13.5. We did that budget amendment some time back. But whatever money we spend, if we go with the lower, which is what the recommendation is, it would just be, it would fall in that budget amendment. So, and that budget, that request, I think is 11.6 for that agency. Budget Amendment Number 13 is the budget for a temporary part-time position in soil and water office during the maternity leave of the department head. Budget Amendment 14 is to increase the Health Department budget for additional WIC and STD prevention funds. And to increase the Health Department budget for Blue Cross Blue Shield of North Carolina Foundation grant, the Health Telemedicine Funds. Budget Amendment Number 15 is to decrease the Health Department budget. The state reduced healthy mother, healthy children due to the NC Session, North Carolina Session Law 2017-57, Senate Bill 257. This resulted in appropriating a significant portion of the maternal and child health block grant to special projects, causing a lack of funds for the healthy mother children, healthy children programs. Budget Amendment Number 16 is to amend the county water and sewer annual budget for estimated costs for engineering contract to prepare and submit the engineering report to the State Division of Water Infrastructure by December 1st, 2017, for the water line extension project. And Budget Amendment Number 17 is to increase the Bethlehem Sewer Fund annual budget for estimated costs of engineering contract to prepare and submit the engineering report to the State Division of Water Infrastructure by December 1st, 2017, for the sewer collection line, extension, and pump station upgrade project. That's for the Bethlehem sewer. The new sales tax that can be used for economic development, public education, and community college began in fiscal year 2017. The county general fund transfer to the Bethlehem Sewer Fund is being taken from the new sales tax that was received in 2017. That's in fund balance. Budget Amendment Number 18 is to budget for general fund local match for the Borealis Compounds Industrial Rail Project. The new sales tax, Article 44, that can be used for economic development, public education, and community college, began in fiscal year 2017. The county match amount is being taken from the new sales tax that was received in fiscal year 2017. And then you have a budget project ordinance. Borealis Compounds Industrial Park is for $500,000. There is revenues. Those revenues are broken down by NC DOT Rail Division, $175,000. NC Railroad Company, $225,000. Alexander Railroad Company, $50,000. Alexander County Government, $50,000, which is, relates to the budget amendment you, I mentioned earlier. And expenditures are construction of a road for that and engineering inspection fees, which also totals $500,000. And I'll be glad to try to answer any questions about all, any of, all those. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners?
Questions?
Mr. French, just one question, and I kind of think I know the answer anyway. The Budget Amendment Number 12.
Yes, sir.
That's something with the ABC and the feasibility that Mr. Bryant, you know, has already approached us with.
Yes.
And I was looking here, it shows $67,250 roughly. That is money that came in from the alcohol excise tax, is that right?
No, that, no, sir. That's just what's budgeted for in governing body and professional and technical services.
Okay. But it's money that came from-
Well, that's the, that's the, that is not, that's just the expenditure side of it. There's a revenue side of it.
Okay.
There were funds received this year.
There was over that much, yes, sir.
How much were roughly?
For $60,000.
So the 60, roughly $60,000. I just, and that's where basically this money is coming from.
Yes, sir.
That, from the alcohol that passed already.
That's correct, yes, sir. All right.
Okay, so to, as my dad would use a, I'm not a regular hunter term, cripple it and let it run by me again. Just to, I would say, just to make this as clear as mud. Basically, the expense for the- Study is kind of- I would say the feasibility study, obviously, I mean, comes out of, I mean, comes out of, has to come from the budget.
It comes out of the budget.
But there is, there has been excise tax that has been, that the county has received.
That's correct. From ABC.
I would say, up until this point already.
Yes, sir.
That would, that was only, that is, that was received because of the passage-
Yes, sir.
-of ABC referendum.
That's correct.
Correct.
That's correct.
So, long story short, just to, so I guess my question, and this is more informational than actually a question, because I think I know the answer. But, so there, in essence, has been money added to the budget that has been received-
That's right.
-from the state of North Carolina through the ABC, you know, ABC Division, the board, whatever you want to call it, that exceeds the amount of this expected expenditure.
Well, the, you have a, you have expense and a revenue. The expense, you already had, you have a expenditure in the governing body. You have that line on professional and technical services.
Sure, yeah, but I'm, I'm just talking about-
And then the revenue comes from fund balance, that's where it goes, yes, sir.
Right. But I'm just saying of the $13,000, you know, the-
That's right.
I mean, we're essentially approving a $13,500 budget amendment.
You are.
To cover the, the feasibility-
Study, that's correct.
The feasibility study, or, you know, or essentially to pay an outside entity to provide the information that the ABC Feasibility Committee needs to be able to do their job.
That's correct, yes, sir.
And basically, that was, all I was trying to say is there-
Yes, sir.
Is, there's money that has come in from the, from the state in the form of excise tax that was only, that was only received because the ABC referendum passed at the, at the last election.
Yes, sir.
So it's paying for its own study.
Yeah, that, yeah.
I think in layman's terms, we could say that the alcohol is paying for the alcohol.
Okay. That's, yes, sir. Okay.
Clarify this, please. Because I'm on BBC. Please, build this study. By passing the referendum, we shared in the distribution of the excise tax. And what we, we received $63,963.61. And that is based on population, not based on anything that is sold. And that is recorded as of June 3rd of each year. And we were only in the, since the referendum passed in November, we actually did not receive before here. So we should see.
Thank you very much, that's very good information to know. Has nothing to do with sales, it has to do with-
It's only based on population.
Population.
Or any county or municipality that has passed.
That has passed, okay, right. And I, and I didn't mean, I didn't make you confused, I guess that's what I was trying to, to get out there, was that-
It's basically, you know, it's funding itself, really, plus-
Any other question on these budget amendments? Do we need to do the 12 through 18 and the other ones?
No, sir. You can, you can vote them all at once.
If somebody wants to vote differently, or they can just indicate one.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, gentlemen, do I have a motion to approve the budget amendments as presented?
Make a motion to approve budget amendments 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, and 18. And do I need to approve the ordinance sitting?
Yes, sir.
Plus ordinance number P1 for Borealis for the project ordinance. Make that in form of a motion.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, is there any further discussion on these budget amendments?
Well, I'd just like to say with Borealis, and Mr. Starr gave us information about infrastructure, shell buildings and those things, and boy, I think, Alexander County, we're right on top of, you know, keeping up with those things, so hope we continue to move forward.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of budgets Amendment 12 through 18 and the ordinance P1, please raise your right hand. Those opposed, likewise? At this time, I'll recognize Rick French, County Manager, on other business. County Managers Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What's being passed down is the sales tax information through September, which is basically one month of sales tax, with our sales taxes running behind. In regular sales tax taxes, we have collected $398,573, which is 8.75% of the budget collected. We've gone through 8.33% of the budget year. We budgeted $4,556,000. We are 4.29% ahead of the same time last year. The new sales tax that's show, shown is $120,923.68. It's 8.64% of the budget collected. The year has expired, it's 8.33. We budgeted $1,399,000, and that's 7.32% ahead. And so I just want to mention that. In the information that I've passed out to you in the County Manager's Report, there is some information that I would like to point something out. With the, you have in your information the attached estimated debt service for both water and sewer that we've been talking about. As we're all aware, we've started the process to, for over $10 million of water and sewer, state loan for sewer, we have the estimated payments, the rate is, we have 1.9%, $3 million of that $5.1 million is a zero interest loan. Those payments will be made, for that debt service will be made with the new sales tax. We also have the water, again, that's the estimated debt service for the water system, and the water total funds is, you have that information, is $4.94,971,335. It has some zero, $3 million in zero interest and $1,971,335 at 1.91%. And I just wanted to show you again, this is, I think we provided that information before, what the principal payment, principal, what the payment and interest were for those items, which was for the interest and the principal for the term of that loan, and again, it's a loan. And I have some other things, Mr. Chairman, but I have a couple things for closed session, but that's, unless you have any questions, that's what I'll, here's my report tonight.
Any questions, gentlemen?
Mr. French, can I ask you one question about the water and sewer?
Yes, sir.
This is another one, I think I know the answers.
Okay.
But, to this point, property tax has never been spent to provide water or sewer.
That's right.
In Alexander County.
That's correct.
Just wanted to make that, I just wanted to make that fact known.
And we are early, early, early in the process with these, both these loans, so we haven't received any funds. You know, we're quite a ways out before we'll start getting in that part of the process, but the actual construction was actually a couple, probably a couple of years out. But we started the planning process.
The reason I wanted to make that point is, as one of the, one of the, one of the guys that's, that I guess is on the subcommittee that's looking at this a little, you know, a little deeper, we, we've had the conversation that it is mu, it is always more fair for the people that use something to pay for it. And there are people in Alexander County that don't have access to county water and probably never will. And, you know, and we, and that's one thing that made me feel really good when I, when I heard, you know, when I heard that the, you know, the water systems in Alexander County to this point have, you know, have managed to be enterprise systems and pay for themselves. Now, those of us with Hickory City Water, or, you know, county water, or Energy United Water, or whatever you want to call it, we're not always thrilled with what our bills are, but-
It's part of it.
I have city water, so I pay for city water. And that's one of those things, and I just wanted to make comment, I know, I feel sure the other Commissioners have had people say to them, "I don't even have city water at my house," or "I don't even have county water." And we wish, you know, we wish that we could take it, that there was a way to, and I think I'm speaking for everybody, that we could, we could offer it to everybody that lives in Alexander County, but obviously, that's not possible. And, but I did want to make the point that the folks that use it pay for it, the folks that don't use it don't.
That's correct.
Okay, any other discussion?
Yes, sir.
At this time, I entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please raise your right hand. All right, this time, I would entertain a motion that we go into closed session, North County General Statute 143-318.11A, 4, 5, and 6, Economic Development, Contractual, and Personnel, and we will only re-adjourn for adjournment on, like, I think I said that right?
We will only reconvene.
Reconvene, sorry.
Close enough, we know what you meant.
Well, I'll come back and leave.
Yeah. You made that as a motion, correct?
No, I'll consider that, somebody make a motion, but correct my. Motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to go into closed session with the, whatever number it was in my paper. Yeah, the number for the closed session.
We should have that, Tom.
Yeah, we should know it by heart, but I can't remember often.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand.
All right.